I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting on March 17th, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement on the protocol for this evening's meeting?
In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, it is strongly encouraged to observe the City Council meeting live on the city of Santa Maria's website at www.cityofsantamaria.org or on the Comcast Cable Channel 23. To view from the city's website, you'll select City, Council, and Committees Meeting Portals and Video from the homepage, and then select the livestream title on the meeting portal. If you're watching the meeting livestream and wish to make either a general comment or a comment on a specific agenda item, as it is being heard, please submit your comment by calling 805-361-9505. That's 805-361-9505. The comments received will be summarized and read to the City Council prior to any action being taken. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limits or late submissions. If you choose to attend the council meeting in person, you will be required to maintain appropriate social distancing, for example, maintain six-foot distance between yourself and other individuals. Please note seating is limited. Additionally, it is requested that you complete a request-to-speak form using your own PIN or use a complimentary PIN provided to you to keep after completing the form. For technical problems accessing any links, please contact the City Clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofsantamaria.org.
Thank you. Our first order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation. Dr. Moats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Didn't realize how loud it sounds out there. And this proclamation is involving our census that's about to be undertaken. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by Article 1, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution to conduct an accurate count of the population every 10 years, and whereas California receives nearly $77 billion in annual federal funding that relies in part on census data, and whereas it is estimated that for every person not counted, local governments lose about $1,500 to $2,000 per person per year for 10 years, and whereas Santa Maria has a large percentage of individuals that are considered traditionally hard to count and are at risk of being missed in the 2020 census, and whereas for the first time since 1790, the public has the option to respond to the 2020 census online as well as mail or by phone, and whereas the city of Santa Maria, in partnership with selected community organizations, is committed to robust outreach and communication strategies focusing on reaching the hardest-to-count individuals. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes that everyone is to be counted in the 2020 census in the city of Santa Maria. And to receive this will be Justine Fisher and Anna Maria Luca.
I'm Justine. I have a permit for five hands sanitizer. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My name is Justice Fisher, I'm a partnership specialist with the 2020 United States Census, and my role is to work with city governments, community-based organizations, and faith systems to get the word out about the 2020 census. I believe your proclamation says it all, the importance of the census, and considering the current environment, even more important to have a population count of our most vulnerable populations. It is imperative that we continue to work on the census even under current restrictions because we are required by the Constitution to have all of this data delivered to the President of the United States by December 31st. So definitely want to encourage everyone to answer their census online or by phone or by paper, the safest way to respond, but to make sure to respond so that our city and our county, our state, and all of the folks who do reside here get the services they need in the future. So thank you so much.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just want to comment that we've done the census at my house, and we did it online. And I just want to comment that it took all of a couple of minutes. It was painless and easy, and it is very difficult for me to say anything was painless and easy with regard to the computers. But it was very simple, easy to the point. It was a couple of basic questions, name, date of birth, address, this kind of thing, boy or girl, and that was about it. And so, thank you very much for your efforts. But I, for one person, would share with you that it happened very quick and easy, online. And I would imagine you can access that anywhere you are. Is that right?
By phone, any computer, 24/7.
Okay.
And in 13 languages.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to comment that at least one person filled it out online, and it was perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Vandykamp, as the city's Public Information Manager, did you have any comments that you wished to make?
I guess thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the public. I gave it to the point. We have a brief presentation with PowerPoint and a couple of videos to share with you. But as Justine from the Census explained, it's safe, it's quick, it's confidential, and we have a very robust campaign going in our community. But since the City Council staff report was written, there have been some changes due to COVID-19, namely, the movie theaters have now closed. So the city's census PSAs that have been airing before every single movie at all screens, which were about 100 per day, are no longer being shown. And we also have a questionnaire assistance kiosk at the library, which will be closed because the library is closed. However, the rest of our campaign will continue to get the word out. We are on numerous radio stations in the community, in English and in Spanish, on American General Media and Emerald Wave Media, and some of our television partners have been kind enough to continue using the PSAs we put out. The PowerPoint is very brief, and if the clerk signals we're ready to do that-
Yeah, I'm trying to-
-then we will go for it. But I can tell you right now that you can begin to, as Councilmember Cordero mentioned, everybody can respond to the census now. So we have a PowerPoint that's very quick. We want people to be counted where they live, which household as of April 1st. And here we go. So you'll see that we have our own logo for the community. Be counted in the 2020 census. Your community is counting on you. And we have it in Spanish. And every 10 years, the census takes place. It's mandated by the Constitution. It's going to have a big impact on our political redistricting. It helps our community get its fair share of federal money. Filling it out, like our guest speaker said, is extremely easy. You can do it online over the phone, or you can request a paper form. If you don't fill it out, you'll receive a follow-up from the Census Bureau. There is nothing on there about the individual's citizenship status, and the Census Bureau will always show a valid Census Bureau ID. It will never, ever ask for payment to fill out the questionnaire, your social security number, or financial information. As has been stated in a different presentation I went to, when you shop on Amazon, it does ask you for your payment information. The census does not do that. It will take you maybe 10 minutes to fill out. It depends on the size of your household. And they want to see everyone who lives at that address, including babies, children, college students, seniors, people who are related to you or not. By now, many people, but by no means everyone, should have received the first of maybe up to four or five mailed invitations from the Census Bureau, and these include a unique 12-digit census ID that links you to a physical address. You don't have to have that census ID if you want to respond online or by phone. I tried it today, and you can simply go to my2020census.gov. And if you don't have it, you can proceed, and you have to click through, and it will ask you what is your address. The good news is, if you're a procrastinator like me, you can wait until tomorrow. You can even wait until next week. Doing it sooner is better. You do have until July 31st, but why wait? Especially those people who are staying home because of the COVID-19. It's an easy thing to do. Just go online and get it done. The census form, this is too much to read. Even my eyesight with glasses, I can't read that. But briefly going through the nine questions, that's right, there's only nine. How many people were living or staying in this house, apartment, or mobile home? Are there any additional people that are staying there on that date, April 1st, that you didn't list? Is this house, apartment, or mobile home, is it owned by you or someone in the household? Does it have a mortgage? That sort of thing. What is your phone number? They will ask you for your phone number as the head of the household in case there are follow-up questions. They'll ask for Person 1's name, so Person 1 will be the head of the household, so that would be my wife. And other smart men in town have told me the same thing. So you'll be the one who is Person 1, and then Person 2, and so on and so forth. And what is Person 1's sex or gender? You just check male or female. And then they ask what is Person 1's age and date of birth. And it's the same thing as you go back for Person Number 2, 3, 4, however many are in the household. Then, we're almost done. Is Person 1 of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin? And then the next question is, what is their race? And that's where it gets into, are they, and it asks white, black, African-American, American Indian, and so on and so forth. And that's it. And the reason that the government asks all those questions is so it can do some basic statistics about each community. And there's some key dates up on the screen, as I mentioned. Most households will receive something in the mail. You're actually going to get three, four, or five reminders. And if you have additional questions about the census, you go to your favorite web browser and type in census questions, or go to census.ca.gov, or simply go to my2020census.gov, and you are good to go. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vandykamp. Any questions? Dr. Moats?
If you've got teenagers that are away at college, you say that they're still a member of your household, and you list them on your census, even though they're not physically living with you, but they're living in the dorms at UCSB?
Well, it depends where they will be living on April 1st of this year. So if they're not living at home, and they live down at UCSB, or Harvard, or wherever they are, that's where they need to be listed as where they're residing then and there.
So they only get to reside in one place on that day?
They do. It's also the same for those, we're a military town, so anyone who is deployed, they are not going to be living at that address on April 1st. They may be overseas. They may be at another, at a U.S. military base somewhere in the United States or overseas, and that's where they will be counted. That's a good question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vandykamp.
Thank you. We can run through, if we have time, just a couple of quick census videos. The city has put together a number of videos which are going out across the county. We have one in Engla-
2020 is a year of the census. As a small business owner, census data helps us to understand the community and serve them better. From planning services to hiring employees, those local community statistics are all informed by the census. Visit santabarbercountycensus.org for more information. Help your community and be counted.
That's my hair stylist.
Thank you very much. Those are roughly a dozen videos that our own Peter Gonzalez, multimedia assistant, did as a contract worker for the county of Santa Barbara. Those are made available to media and for our social media, anyone that's free to use those. The first one you saw was airing at our local theaters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item of the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form. And Madam Mayor, presently I have two requests to speak.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, no further requests be accepted, and we will keep the timer for three minutes. Okay. Mark Ratamaker, followed by Glenn Morris.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me three minutes of your time, Mayor, my fellow Santa Marians. A farmer and a teacher, a hooker and a preacher, riding on a midnight bus bound for Mexico. One was headed for vacation, one for higher education. Two of them were searching for lost souls. That driver never, ever saw the stop sign. And 18-wheelers don't stop on a dime. There are three wooden crosses on the right side of the highway. Why there's not four of them, heaven only knows. It's not what you take when you leave this world behind you. It's what you leave behind you when you go. That farmer left a harvest, a home, and 80 acres. A faith and love for growing things in his young son's heart. That teacher left her wisdom, the minds of lots of children, and did her best to give them all a better start. And the preacher whispered, "Can't you see that promised land?" as he laid his bloodstained Bible in that hooker's hand. There are three wooden crosses on the right side of the highway. Why there's not four of them, heaven only knows. Guess it's not what you take when you leave this world behind you. It's what you leave behind you when you go. It's a story that our preacher told last Sunday. As he held that bloodstained Bible up for all of us to see, he said, "Bless the farmer, and the teacher, and that preacher, who gave that Bible to my mama, who read it to me." There are three wooden crosses on the right side of the highway. Why there's not four of them, now, yes, we know. It's not what you take when you leave this world behind you. It's what you leave behind when you go. There are three wooden crosses on the right side of the highway. Santa Maria, thank you for giving me three minutes of your time. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to take just a moment this evening to share a little bit about what we're doing to try to support our local business community during this time of crisis. As you can imagine, things are moving quickly, as I'm sure they are in your world, and the information, you know, and the direction that's coming out seems to change almost every time I refresh my browser. So what we have focused on at the chamber so far is really trying to curate that information and make it available to our business community and to the public at large in an organized and consistent format. So if you, folks want to go to our website at santamaria.com/coronavirus-resources, you'll find a real long library now of material that's available. So now that we've got information going out, and I think it's important to know that our commitment as a chamber is to provide current and factual information so the businesses can make decisions and people can make decisions based on facts and not some of the rumors and misinformation that can get out there. Now that the information's out, we're pivoting to how do we help support our local businesses, and why is that important? Well, as I was talking this week with one of our social service agencies, you know, many of them are gearing up for significantly increased demand on their services. I think I heard the number, and I may be wrong, but I think the scale is right, that I think it was 10,000 people in the state of California filed for unemployment today. Today. So you can imagine that the need is going to get bigger. And the conversation we were having is, how do we get in front of that line and prevent people from having to ask for public assistance? And the way we do that is we keep them employed, right? And, you know, the other comment that I heard that I thought was relevant in this conversation is, one person's spending is another person's income. So while we want people to be safe, we want people to be smart, and to take lots of precautions, we also need people to understand that the economy needs to continue to move, or it will eventually grind down to where none of us have the resources to move forward. So what can we do? What can people do? So the first thing we encourage them to do is to shop local. So before you decide that it's, you know, you should order from, you know, just everything online and have it shipped to your front door, you know, what we encourage folks is, if you're able, if it's safe for you to do so, shop in our local stores. These are the people that are employing our community, and our neighbors, and our family. If you're not able to go into the store physically, check to see if they have an online store, right? Check our local merchants first before doing the easy things. Many of our stores will provide pickup arrangements. Many of them, I think, now are starting to look at delivery options. They will accommodate. They will find ways to work with you. Specifically in our restaurants, many people in our community rely on our restaurants, not just as social activities, but as sources of their meals. And as our restaurants pivot to follow the guidance that they've been given, the closed-in restaurant dining, many of them are staying open and making special arrangements to provide, again, you know, storefront pickup, or, you know, drive-through options if they have the physical drive-through. But at a minimum, you're finding many of them are starting to offer special menus that allow for that kind of takeout option. We have a list on our website, and it'll be on our social media, that lists which of the restaurants in the community are following those kind of, making those kind of options. We also think it's important to think about the workers that are in those. Many of the people that are your servers are the folks that are going to get impacted first. So as you're paying for that meal, think about adding a little extra to the tip line, if you're in a position to be able to do so, because as their hours are reduced, that extra little bit that we can all give one at a time might be the difference between them needing to ask for public assistance or go without. If you're not in a position where you want to, you know, you don't need stuff to be consumed at the moment, or, you know, so one of the other options we're encouraging folks to do is buy gift cards. Those provide revenue to the stores in the moment. You can come back and claim the product you want with those whenever it's convenient for you to do so, and you feel safe again. Similarly, if you have a gym subscription, or a trainer, or a cleaning service, we would encourage you to continue to keep those active. You may not be using them as much today, but that ongoing small revenue piece from many customers is how those businesses stay afloat. I mentioned earlier the social service agencies. If you are able, we would encourage you, everyone, to think about the agencies that they support, that they care about, and to give a little extra. Again, I think many of our agencies, particularly those involved with food and with children, those that will be providing rent and utility support, their needs to spend is going to go up dramatically and unplanned, right? And so while they may have had a great strategic plan in place, and have been actively sourcing the resources they needed, this is a new reality, and they're going to need additional resources. So we're encouraging everyone to dig a little deeper and give a little bit more to support our community. And then, you know, I think it's important that we stay connected. The best way to do that right now is socially, through our social media. You know, talk about those businesses that you appreciate. If you get good service, if they make an accommodation, tell other people about it so that they have an opportunity to get additional business. In addition to those kinds of pieces, we have a survey available on our website today, open to all businesses, not just members of the chamber, but all businesses in the community. We are asking them to share with us the impacts that they are beginning to feel and that they anticipate feeling. That information will allow us to work with city government, with our other business partners, to identify solutions that we can begin to bring to bear to support our business community. So we would encourage all business owners in the community to go to the chamber website, santamaria.com, and complete that survey. It will take you three or four minutes to do it, and it will add the kind of information, provide the kind of information that we need to respond in a way that is smart and relevant and directly to the current needs. I think, Mayor, that's the points that I wanted to make this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, our members of the council, have.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions from the council?
I do, Madam Mayor. Is that survey available in Spanish for our Spanish speaking?
Yeah, it will be very soon. We're getting it translated right now.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here and sharing it with us. Ms. Waterfield can do that for you. She's a techie. Madam Clerk, have you received any calls or comments from the public?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We've received one from Ms. Sylvia Bernard, thanking the City Council for partnering with Good Samaritan Shelter.
Okay. Thank you. So that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments at this time?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can piggyback on the comments Mr. Morris made, the status of coronavirus, the COVID-19 pandemic we're in the middle of. So earlier this month, we did start seeing the spread of the coronavirus through the United States. On March 12th, the County of Santa Barbara declared a proclamation of local emergency, which impacts the city of Santa Maria and all the other cities in Santa Barbara County with the proclamation that affects us as well of emergency. And they also declared a local health emergency by the county health officer and public health director, and that specifically issued health orders. And since then, the health orders have been amended and further increased strictness, primarily to impact social distancing, reduce gathering, and to assure that the vulnerable population, people over 65 or sensitive receptors, are separated, or have the opportunity to not have the disease spread as easily to them. We can provide more additional update. We have Chief Champion here, who's been our lead from the city, and then Sue Anderson from Marion Hospital to provide more information of the status of our COVID situation and the response that we have to date.
Thank you. Chief Champion?
Evening, Madam Mayor, City Council staff, and viewing public. I just wanted to give you a brief report on what your staff has been working on related to the COVID-19. As Mr. Morris stated earlier, this is a very quick developing issue, and we have purposely really tried to focus our efforts in communicating well. And so there have been a lot of collaboration, collaborating meetings and coordinating meetings through regular conference calls. There's conference calls every day internally with city staff, with the public health department, with Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Management, and all county fire chiefs. Staff has updated our city cams, policies, and continuity of operations plan. We have also created a COVID-19 action plan, inventoried all personal protective equipment throughout the city- throughout the city, and developed an incident action plan for a set operational period. Ensuring city employees and public are, that are informed through the news outlets, social media, internal emails, and employee training are some of the other things that we are doing internally. Each department is practicing the CDC guidelines in regards to gatherings, social distancing, personal hygiene, personal protective equipment, and overall exposure reduction efforts. The HR department has, is working on evaluating impacts to our employees and finding ways to support their health and well-being. Our dispatchers are screening 911 calls for potential COVID-19 patients and notifying first responders so they can take protective actions. We also were advised today that Santa Barbara County has stood up their Type III Incident Management Team to also help coordinate collectively our efforts throughout the county. And lastly, we are tracking costs, hard and soft costs, for potential reimbursement as this continues to develop and we start spending more and more of our resources here in the community. Before I introduce President and CEO of Marion Medical Center, that's the end of my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Chief Champion?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Soto?
Chief, there have been reports that the fire department in San Jose has had, you know, some of their firefighters have gotten COVID-19, and so I'm wondering what precautions our department is taking.
Sure. Thank you for that question. So, our dispatchers are screening calls for potential COVID-19 patients. So, from the information that they're getting from the caller, they will take that and give that information to first responders. So, en route, they know that there's a potential for this. And so, when they arrive on scene, they take the time to put on their proper PPE, which includes gowns, gloves, N95 masks, and eye protection. They're doing initial screening and contact from the door, so if they don't have to enter the residence, they will try not to. If the patient is able to come outside, that's a better environment for all. If not, we will just limit our exposure, sending only one firefighter in to do an assessment, limit the exposure for the entire crew. So, there's actions that we're taking in place to try and reduce the amount of exposure we have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sue Anderson, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council, Chief Champion. I also brought with me tonight Dr. Scott Robertson. He's president of our Pacific Central Coast Health Centers, which we have about 40 health centers up and down the central coast. A lot of those are in the greater Santa Maria area, so he'll talk a little bit from the outpatient side, what's going on. I'll talk about within the hospital. You know, I think, like I told the board of supervisors this morning, I think that one of our nurses summed it up best when she said, you know, we said, "How are you doing?" And she said, "This is what we train for. This is what we're ready for. You know, we're on it." And it's so true. I mean, we do take care of infectious diseases all the time. We, this is a little different than we've had in the past, as we all know, but we are trained to do this. We're ready for this kind of thing. And some of the things that we're doing that I can tell you about are visitor policy. We have implemented restrictive visitor policies. We are only allowing one visitor per patient. We are in our skilled nursing facility. No visitors are allowed. We're encouraging Skype and other ways of communicating, but unfortunately, right now, we can't risk it with having visitors coming in and out of our facilities. Our supplies, you know, I think at a lot of places, those have been a worry, but our supply counts, we've inventoried all of our masks and gowns and everything, and we're in pretty good shape right now. We also luckily are part of a very much bigger organization, Common Spirit Health, and they have assured us that if we run low, they will get us the supplies we need. They feel like these supply chain channels are working as they should, and we can get the supplies we need. We, you know, are trying to continue to provide services for all of our patients while at the same time being prudent of trying to limit the number of people coming in and out. We really, actually, right now, our patient census is lower than it normally, than it's been for months. So, we have beds available. This morning, it was great by WebEx. We got approval from CDPH to open up a couple of areas within the hospital. One of them's behind our emergency room. That's going to allow us to do, where people need to be tested, we can test them not in the emergency room proper, which will keep the emergency room for true emergency patients. And we got approval for a 12-bed unit that's in the old hospital to use that now, if needed, for inpatients. And we're lucky, you know, we have the old hospital building, and right now, they're willing to give you flex to use whatever buildings or services you have, so we're good with that. So, we're in very good shape. I would say, I think if you were to ask me, the thing that's been the trickiest is the testing in this county. Our testing's been sent out to Ventura and Santa Barbara Testing and, I mean, Santa Barbara Labs, and, I'm sorry. It's been sent out to Ventura and San Luis Obispo Labs, and the turnaround on that has been very slow. So, patients are, you know, staying in the hospital or going home and waiting, having to wait days sometimes for the test results. I believe that will ramp up in the next few weeks. We will, we got word today that we'll even have in-house testing at some point where we can, we think we'll be able to do 700 tests a day. So, it's going to get much improved from where it's at right now, but right now, testing is very limited, and so we have to really keep it to those who are at the highest need to be tested. So, Scott, do you want to say anything about from the outpatient side?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Doctor.
Members of the city council, as well as staff. I'm Scott Robertson, a family medicine-trained physician. I also serve as the Division Chief Medical Officer for Dignity Health for the Central Coast, and President and CEO of Pacific Central Coast Health Centers. We have 41 physicians' offices in San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County, 17 specialties within these offices, the vast majority of which are family medicine and internal medicine, so primary care offices. I can tell you that all 41 of our offices remain open. We've looked at guidance from the Centers of Disease Control, giving particularly seniors or other high-risk individuals the option of postponing their physician visits if they're not acutely ill, or the postponement can be safe to do so, to make sure that we have capacity to answer telephones and to see people who have acute issues, to make sure that they get into the physician's office. I'd like to echo Sue's comments with regards to the excellent clinical management staff that we have here in Santa Maria. Everyone has stepped up to the plate. We are all working with one voice and in step with each other and prepared for what may come over the next few weeks. In addition, I'd also like to echo Sue's comments with regards to the frustrations centered around the capacity for testing. Having to send out the vast majority of tests from northern Santa Barbara County has significantly limited the types of patients we can test. We have to triage these patients, and we're really only testing the sickest patients and those that test negative for other influenza-like illnesses. Hopefully, we get this capacity much greatly expanded over the coming weeks, but that still is a major bottleneck within our system at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sue, when you speak of the old hospital, are you talking about the old community hospital on Stoll or the facility that has not been used as much over on Church Street?
That's a really good question. I was speaking more about the facility on Church Street, the old part of the hospital that we still use. There's a lot of offices and other things that are in that building that we could easily convert to patient rooms if we had to. And then, Stoll is still an opportunity too. If we had to, we could probably get Program Flex to use that facility too. So, we're actually very fortunate here that we have some abilities that maybe some other areas don't have to ramp up pretty quickly.
I see. Thank you very much. And what is your last name, please?
Anderson, but it's with an S-E-N.
I'm sure that I'll get questions, and I just need to know who I spoke to. Hopefully, we'll keep them on my phone and not on yours, but I have had some questions regarding this very issue. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Oh, Dr. Moats?
I've been reading where the hospitals in Italy and now France are just getting overwhelmed, and they're simply running off acute care beds or intensive care unit beds. You think you've got the situation under control here? Is there any possibility Marion Extended Care might be used for acute care?
I don't ever see Marion Extended Care being used for acute care because we are absolutely full with skilled nursing patients. A lot of them are long-term residents there. That's their home, so that wouldn't really be an option. But we are lucky, you know, we have, we have the rooms in the old hospital, we have the rooms over at Marion West, so we hope and pray that we have enough, enough beds and enough rooms for patients.
Yeah, if we, let's just say we've got 100,000 people living in the Santa Maria Valley. We know it's much more than that. And I've heard accounts that anywhere from 20% to 60% of people are eventually going to get it. So, if we get 20% that get it, that's 20,000 people, and those, there's a significant amount that are going to need the intensive care unit, but maybe 10% or 20% of those?
Right. So, they're talking about that the top 20%, I mean, 20% of those getting, that get infected could require hospitalization. So, it could be, you know, it just depends on how many get infected as to how many could end up in the hospital. But, you know, a lot of the people don't require ICU care. A lot of them can go into regular isolation room, you know, we can put them in isolation rooms. We can take care of them that way. You know, as you know, what the biggest recommendation is for most people to stay home and self-quarantine and stay out of the public, and they'll recover, you know, from the flu-like, flu-like symptoms. But it's mainly people with comorbidities or other issues going on that are going to have trouble. And as you know, what we're all trying to do is by all of us staying home and all, is to keep that curve that's heading up to flatten out here soon so that, you know, we take care of it just as a normal course of business. And yes, we might be a little busier, but at least it won't come all at once. If it's spread out over time, that would make taking care of that 20% much easier.
Is there a possibility we might need 3,000 to 5,000 beds for acutely ill people with this condition?
3,000 to 5,000 beds all at once? I...
Well, I've been told that if you get hospitalized, you're in the hospital for at least two weeks. I mean, you could fill up the beds pretty quick, and, you know, I'm just concerned about getting overwhelmed like they are in Italy.
Yeah. No, I mean, we're all concerned about that. You know, we're trying to free up as many beds as we can. We've also talked about things like, do we have facilities that we could empty out by maybe moving patients to other facilities and putting all of them in one facility? I mean, we have three hospitals right here locally on the central coast, and we're working together on our plans so that if one gets inundated, the other two can help out. So, you know, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that?
Yes, certainly, Dr. Moats. If we needed 3,000 hospital beds, that would be a severe crisis that no, no health system on the central coast would be able to meet that demand. The good news is, is my colleagues in the Pacific Northwest, which is probably the greatest hotspot in the United States right now for acutely ill patients, had been able to meet the demand in a way that has put strain on their healthcare system, but they've still been able to work through, through that by innovative measures, flexing. The federal government, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid have given various waivers and relief so that we do have some freedom to use resources in a way that we feel like we need to be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I guess this question here, comment, comment slash question goes to maybe Scott. I think that the truth is, we don't know. And, I mean, tomorrow morning, we could, we could wake up and have 25 new cases and maybe none, no more new cases. Trying to extrapolate information from the comments from you professional people, is it, is it safe for someone in my position to do just that, to extrapolate the information and suggest that we here in Santa Maria proper are in better shape than other communities of like size, meaning that we have the Stoll Road facility we can go after, we have some offices we can reclaim for patient care, we have home care? I think that, yeah, yes, we could have a terrible situation and need 20,000 beds, but the fact is, I believe we're in, starting out in better shape than other areas of like size. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with your comments. We have done everything in our power over the past two weeks to free up as much capacity as possible. You know, keep in mind that there are still people with acute care needs in the community. There are still heart attacks and car accidents, and so we're caring for those individuals each and every day. But we've tried to free up as much elective procedures outside of our hospitals, things that can be safely delayed, so that that capacity is there and ready. We've been very fortunate with our geographic isolation that this hasn't been an area that's seen widespread COVID-19 activity yet. This has bought us some time, and we're very grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm not trying to suggest that we don't keep the idea in mind that there's a worst-case scenario out there, but I'm looking for that silver lining, if you will, that we can, we can hope and depend on and hope for as we move through this process together as a, as a community team. Thank you very much for your information.
Just one other comment. We've set up our own Incident Command Center. We have several times a day meetings and touch bases, but like Scott made a good point, which is, we have hospitals in several of the areas that have been hardest hit. We have several up in Washington, and we're getting reports from them every day about how they're dealing with it and what, what the influx is to their hospitals. And yes, they've been inundated, but they're able to handle it within their hospitals, and hopefully, that's a good indication to us to...
Learn from them.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for being here and for the work that you're doing in caring for, for us here in our, on the central coast. Just to piggyback on Dr. Moats' points and Councilmember Cordero's points, I, just reiterating the importance of social distancing, you know, a lot of people, from what I'm reading, have been asymptomatic, and I think it's really going to be up to, to the millennials and the younger folks, right, to, to maintain that social distancing, and it's going to take all of us to, to do our part in order to make sure that, you know, our hospitals and healthcare facilities are not inundated and that you all are still able to provide care for those who do suffer from heart attacks or other types of illnesses or health issues. And so, again, really making sure that we're maintaining social distancing, that we follow the guidelines of our public health officials and government officials. And with that, I do have a question, but I don't know who would be apt to answer that, whether it would be Chief Champion or Chief Hanson. You know, there have been recommendations of restaurants and bars, nightclubs, wineries, brew pubs closing, and are we having conversations with, you know, the sheriff's department? Like, what, what are the, what are we doing as a city to do our part to make sure that those facilities are closing, to keep, flatten? sure that those facilities are closing, to keep, flatten that curve?
I think that Mr. Stillwell and I have been on a couple of phone conferences, and that would, go ahead, Mr. Stillwell.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so that was an additional health order issued today, was to not have gatherings at bars, and for bars to cease operations, and for restaurants to limit their seating, maintaining their social distancing. So, that is, it had been discussed as a suggestion and, and advice, but this, late this afternoon, it came out as an order. And what, and so what we're doing, so it's like any of these orders, so they primarily are, they are enforceable by law. They are health orders. They are primarily enforced through people's, appealing to people's higher values of trying to protect public health that are fundamentally based on public health. And so, it's an opportunity for us as a community to come together and, and make sure that we're keeping each other safe and, and maintaining social distancing and not doing the things that the science is showing us can help this disease spread faster than we would want it to. And then, in addition to that, the public health officer and does have the authority under the law to have the sheriff enforce health officer codes as well, or health, health orders, I mean.
So, do you guys take your, I guess marching orders for a better word, from the CDC or from public health?
Both. Yeah, we're getting, we're getting updates almost hourly practically from these different agencies and stuff, and we're trying, most of them are coming out, some as orders, but some as recommendations. And so then, we have to vet them with our medical staff and all. But it's been a really collaborative...
I know. What, what was the recommendation on Thursday is an order today, so we're seeing that also. Let me ask you also, I heard on, I was watching the President's Task Force with Dr. Fauci and Dr. Birx, and what about our telemedicine?
Right, well, in fact, why don't you?
Yeah, so telemedicine is something that's always been available. You can always, you know, talk to a physician over the telephone, and there's a mechanism to account for that and document for that. One of the things that the federal government did today with regards to providing some relief under the Health Information Privacy and Portability Act is giving a waiver for that, for video visits. And so, using non-HIPP approved technology in order to facilitate, so things like Skype or FaceTime or other types of technology. And so, this is something that, that we expect to be rolling out locally, hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay, so then, do people call their physician, or do they call a different number?
So, we're working through that. We'll have to set up unique identifiers with, with the, with the devices themselves. We'll coordinate over telephone and say, you know, Mrs. Johnson, you have an appointment, video visit at 2:00 today. You know, give us your address, and we'll, we'll log on at that time.
Okay, and when you get that information, can you let the city know, and we can put that on our website also, so that people have that information?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. What else?
Madam Mayor, I have one clarification from our city manager. What you had said was a voluntary for the restaurants to seat six, space the patrons apart. Is that an order to close the restaurant or to just continue working in that manner?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, so the, what was advice, like we alluded to, what was advice a couple days ago to have fewer people in the restaurants and to not congregate at bars now is an order? So, the, the standard is the same of having six-foot separation in the restaurants. The advice, I think it is still advice to have 50% occupancy, but the order is to maintain the social distancing in the restaurants.
Okay, so it's not mandatory for the restaurants or bars to close down?
The bars, yes, it is mandatory for the bars.
For the bars, okay. What if the restaurant has a bar?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, because people are asking me these questions, and so I just want to...
Just the bar, not the restaurant?
Generally, the interpretation is a restaurant bar would be considered still a restaurant with the bar closed, but that a bar that is not food service would be considered a bar, and it would be closed.
Correct, correct. At some restaurants, you have the bar and the dining room attached to each other. So, you just move the stools away from the bar and...
You, you close the bar function.
Okay.
For the purpose of not having food. So, you, so as long as you're serving food, then it's considered a restaurant?
Okay, thank you very, oh, Dr. Moats?
Okay, so I ordered a Swiss chowder, and I want to have a filet mignon, but I want to have a martini before my dinner is served. Does that mean they can't give me my martini?
Alcohol is, it is not prohibited to have alcohol, it's prohibited to have a bar-only function.
Just bar only?
Correct. So, if the restaurant is open and, and it has alcohol service attached to it, my understanding of the most recent order, and that may change, is that the bar function can be provided, not bar-only function.
Okay. And who is it that makes this decision? Is it the county?
It's the county public health officer who has the authority under the Health and Safety Code to make these orders. The city does not, and the state does on a level because the state licenses alcohol in restaurant businesses.
But these, these decisions are coming down from the governor and from the feds, right? They're not coming from the county?
Again, that's generally what's happening, is it's coming from Sacramento, and then the county is putting it out locally.
And putting it out. And then, we fall underneath that, so we do what the public health says to do. We don't make those decisions on our own. We do what they tell us to do. And I, I think you might be relieved to know, I was watching the TV, and I saw these college kids that are on spring break, so they have separated themselves down on the beach in Florida from the rest of us, so they're doing their share.
It's extraordinary.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Robertson, for being here. Thank you, Sue, appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, I, there, I just want to get this information. This is a press release on the 12th that we put out, that the City of San Amre is canceling through March. It's public advance in programs by the Recreation and Parks Department and Public Library and Branch Libraries. We have now closed the library, right, which puts us in conflict with doing the census at the library. The decision is a result of today's Declaration of Local Health Emergency by the county to slow the transmission of COVID-19. Effective immediately until March 30th, the health order states, "The health officer is mandating cancellation or postponement of nonessential gatherings of 250 people, and small gatherings shall include six-foot distancing between participants, particularly those of high risk." Now, that was back in March 12th and 13th, and now we're up to 10 people for adding. Go ahead, Mr. Stillwell.
The, the standard holds, or still holds for the social distancing, that impact on the city has evolved a bit. Again, we're working to comply with that order. We recognize right away, we weren't able to comply at our senior center and our classrooms, so we closed those nearly immediately after the order, realizing we weren't able to maintain that. We tried to keep the library open for three days and recognized we weren't able to maintain social distancing there, so the library has now closed. We have made adjustments to utility billing, and so far, it seems as though social distancing is adhering there, which is an important function for people who want to pay their utility bills. Most of them pay it in cash and come into the office, and we put up signage and put in some ways to create the social distancing that folks are adhering to. We're having difficulty at the building department and the engineering department at Ruffoni because just, it's primarily to the way the building is laid out. It forces everyone into a small area, and that's inhibited our ability to be able to maintain the order there. So, we are looking at additional steps to likely close those counters, to walk in traffic, be able to help meet the service demands of people both online, on the phone, and by appointment, and then use a drop box for people so they don't have to come and wait at our offices. So, it's, it is an evolving situation that we're having to respond to in order to maintain the order. But as of right now, the city hall is still open, and we, again, our goal is to be open for business. We recognize that we have a vital function here with the city, and that people want to continue doing their business, and, and we want to continue to provide the service, but we also need to comply with the order.
And as you well know already, the kickoff for the Downtown Fridays has been postponed from March 27th to May 1st, so we'll see how that goes. There's, it's, this is so fluid, and it's just evolving constantly. On the 13th, I was on a phone conference, and from that point until the 15th, on Sunday, I was at another phone conference, and that, and on that phone conference was Mr. Stillwell and myself from Santa Maria, Congressman Carver Hall, Senator Jackson, Assemblyman Cunningham's office was there, Assemblywoman Limon, Supervisor Hart, Supervisor Adam, and the Mayor Mario from Santa Barbara, along with her city manager, Mayor Perotti from Galida, myself, and Mayor Toussaint Assolving, along with Cliff Radford and Dan Gilchrist. And they were going through the new guidelines, and this is all, this is all new for all of us. So, it's, it's constantly evolving, but at that time, that's when they decided on the occupancy of restaurants was 50%, and the six-foot social distance, and asking people 65 or over to isolate themselves. This is asking right now, it's not mandatory yet. And so, I did ask them about churches because I was confused about, about that. And Mr. Stillwell, can you give us the explanation on churches?
They did say on that call that churches were not exempt. That was a specific question. They do fall within the order of a gathering and need to maintain their social distancing. And I think it's similar probably to the city. Some churches are able to comply with that based on how their facilities are set up. Obviously, the bigger churches that have more than 250 would fall in, under that first threshold of not allowing to have that gathering. But specifically in the order, churches weren't exempted as a, they were included in as a, as a congreg, as a gathering that was impacted by the order, yes.
And with that, Madam Mayor, at Pacific Christian, I did get a notice that they weren't holding any on-campus services at all whatsoever.
And I talked to Pastor Mossholder today, because I was concerned that there were churches still having services in large, and especially with the elderly population they have. And I talked to Pastor Nielsen also about this, so that was a concern of mine, that, because basically, it's, it's going to boil down to all of us in the community doing our share of what we can to fight this virus. The Office of Emergency Management, I have a number, did we have a thing, a number? It's 833-688-5551. And Public Health said that was the, that was the number that we can call if we have any questions.
And that's the Office of?
OEM, Office of Emergency Management. So, I just, I want to reiterate that at the local level, we have a responsibility of informing people and being part of this. And we forget about the freedoms we have. I was going to make an appointment to get my nails done, and I was going to do all these things, and I completely forgot, you know. I have the responsibility to, as each one of us in the room, though we think we're healthy and we can go and do these things. And I think that our governor is doing a great job, our president is doing a great, great job of trying to keep people informed, and they're all saying the thing, same thing, we need to work together. And those mitigation efforts are paramount in the next few weeks. Public health orders are enforceable by law, and I don't want to wave a establish a viral, a virus police chant to enforce some of these, but, but anyway, just, I just plead to everyone to please just do their, your part so that we can get over this. Any other comments, questions? Dr. Moats?
I'm curious about the restrictions on 65-year-olds walking around, not in self-purposed quarantine in their homes. Does the city have a policy on that? What about city employees that are over 65? Are they told to stay home?
We sent out a notice on that. Yes, Mr. Stillwell, can you speak to that?
It's not an, it's not required by law at this point, but it is advised, and it's based on the susceptibility that, that certain demographics have, both people over 65 and other, what they're calling sensitive receptors, so people with underlying health concerns. And so, we do have a number of those as employees, and we've notified them. Obviously, the folks with sensitive receptors, you can't just go out and ask an employee or someone what's their health issue, but for people, we have told people that if they are sensitive receptors, we've advised them of what the order is and what the advice is. And we're making accommodations for people to be able to telework or work on different shifts, or, and we're providing personal protective equipment. And so, the, right now, the, the general advice is for people in those categories to stay at home and to self-isolate and to avoid congregating and gatherings.
So, this is voluntary at this point, it's your discretion, yet you say, now it's voluntary. The implication there is, is there some chance that they really might take 65 and up and make them stay at home by law?
Again, it's impossible for us to speculate about the needs that are determined by the health, you know, the health officer, because again, it's a health-based scenario, not a criminally-based scenario. However, a health officer's order is enforceable by law as a misdemeanor, can be enforced by any peace officer or strike that, any police or sheriff's officer within the state of California. So, we do know that there have been quarantine areas set up in other states. It is not likely, but at the same time, it is personally advisable if you are at risk to not put yourself or someone else at risk. And that's what we're trying to emphasize, is not speculate on what may happen, but try and deal with what we have right now, which is minimize impact and minimize, as the doctor said, impacts on emergency facilities and health services based on the fact that someone is a knucklehead.
And I received, these are the guidelines that were yesterday from the President's Coronavirus Guidelines for America, 15 days to slow the, slow the spread. One is listen to and follow the directions of your state and local authorities. If you feel sick, stay home, do not go to work, contact your medical provider. If your children are sick, keep them at home, do not send them to school. But now, we, we don't have school for, what is it, here in San Amre?
Two and a half weeks.
Two and a half more weeks. I know up in Napa, they're, I think they're out for the, for the rest of the year. So, every, every district is different. If someone in your household has tested positive for the coronavirus, keep the entire household at home, do not go to work, do not go to school, contact your medical provider. If you're an older person, stay home and away from other people. If you are a person with a serious underlying health condition that can put you in increased risk, that impairs your lung or heart function, or weakens your immune system, stay home and stay away from other people. Even if you are young or otherwise healthy, you're at risk and your activities can increase the risk for others, it's critical that you do your part to stop the spread of the coronavirus. Work or engage in schooling from home whenever possible. If you work in a critical infrastructure industry as defined by the Department of Homeland Security, such as a healthcare services and pharmaceutical and food supply, you have a special responsibility to maintain your normal work schedule. You and your employer should follow the CDC guidance to protect your health at work. Avoid social gatherings in groups of more than 10. Avoid eating or drinking in bars, restaurants, and food courts. Use drive-through, pickup, or delivery options. Avoid discretionary travel, shopping trips, and social visits. Do not visit nursing homes or retirement or long-term facilities unless to provide critical assistance. And of course, it goes on, we know, practice good hygiene, wash your hands, avoid touching your face, sneeze or cough into a tissue or inside your elbow, and disinfect frequently used items and services as much as possible. And that is from yesterday, and it could change by tomorrow, or this afternoon. Yes?
Madam Mayor, with that, I just got information from Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham's office stating that Governor Newsom today placed National Guard personnel on alert to support the COVID-19 community readiness. Following through on his commitment to mobilize state personnel and assets to protect local communities and fight the spread of COVID-19, Governor Gavin Newsom today announced that he has placed the California National Guard on alert. The National Guard has been directed by the governor to be prepared to perform humanitarian missions across the state, including food distributions, ensuring the realency of supply lines, as well as supporting public safety as required. As Californians make sacrifices over the coming weeks and stay home, we are immensely grateful for medical providers, first responders, and National Guard personnel who are assisting those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19. So, and there is a phone number for information if you need to go further with that, so.
Thank you. And I had spoken to Mr. Morris from the Chamber of Commerce today. And I had spoken to Mr. Morris from the Chamber of Commerce today. And I'd also heard on the news that there were some grocery stores that were providing certain hours for the elderly, for people that are disabled, and for pregnant women. And I had the opportunity to call Food Max, Viarta, and Albertson's. Albertson's, I spoke to the manager there, and he wasn't sure what the corporate offices were going to do yet. Food Max, they weren't aware of that, and they didn't know what they were going to do. I spoke to the manager at Viarta Market, and he said they're opening for elderly and the pregnant women and people with disabilities from 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning at all 50 stores, because they have other stores. Well, they have two stores in Santa Maria, but they have them throughout California. So, pardon?
Target also is open for senior 65 and over from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. So thank you very much. And that's, I just wanted to get all that information out because people are asking, I'm sure they're asking all of us. And our answer may not be the same today as it is tomorrow, but tomorrow's another day, so. Anyway, any other comments, Mr. Stillwell? Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I do have item 3G, but I just need to abstain from that one item.
3G, okay.
If no one else has anything to pull, then I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar without item 3G.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 3G. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
All right, make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve item 3G.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item 3G. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
No.
Oh, I mean, I abstained. I'm so automatic, thank you. Strike that, I abstained.
Okay. Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The presentation by the Child Abuse Listening Mediation Call has to be postponed, so we'll move on to a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title for the item number 5A?
The City Council will receive a presentation from city staff on the proposed citywide priorities and goals as developed by the City Council during the February 14, 2020 goal-setting workshop, and adopt a resolution confirming the priorities for 2020, 2022, and approving the minutes of the workshop.
And the staff report is to be made by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. The City Council, oh, yeah. So we meet today on St. Patrick's Day. The City Council had a goal-setting on Valentine's Day, so I'm here to report on that. But so the, biannually, the City Council does meet, has a retreat and a goal-setting session. This year was on February 14. The opportunity is for the council to get together, talk about council norms and how the council works together, how the city works and operates, and what the priorities are for the city for the next few years. It's opportune time to have that meeting ahead of our budget development process. We develop a two-year budget that the council will be considering in June for adoption starting July 1. So it's important for us to have that meeting. And the item tonight is to be able to get a brief presentation on that meeting and to adopt the report from that meeting as the minutes of that City Council meeting, because it is a regular City Council meeting, even though it's an off-site retreat. So the, I had a couple of presentation slides, but I can just briefly say.
And do you realize, Mr. Stillwell, with all the guidelines we're looking at today, we would not have had that retreat?
Yeah, that's true.
Because we had two people coughing, and I was laying in bed at home, so.
Thanks, Ron. So just a few slides to walk through it here, I think. So I mentioned that it does set the path for the next two years. We have had these for the past six years with help from Jan Perkins from Management Partners. She's a retired city manager, understands Santa Maria well, and we've worked well with her in being able to identify priorities and have her work through the discussions with the City Council. So we're pleased to have her back here for the third time. And again, it was a two-part meeting, one just to discuss issues of council operation, and then the second to have consensus on priorities. So the first, as far as council norms and operations, one point that the council reiterated was the governance resolution. And as you'll recall, the City Council, after we started, after the community started electing council members by district, the council adopted a resolution to say that even though council members are elected by district, the council will still govern as a whole. And so the council did reiterate that resolution, reiterating the points of the resolution that the focus on the council will be on the city as a whole. Each council member's focus is on the city. We won't divide up policies by district. And if council members are contacted by any member of the community, the focus will be on customer service and providing response and information to that inquiry, rather than just shuffling them off to another council member who might be representing that district. So it continues to maintain our focus of citywide governance and priority on customer service. And then the priorities that came out of the meeting were, one, again overarching priority, and then five specific priorities. And again, the overarching priority was maintaining fiscal stability. That had been a top priority for several years, and the council recognized that is really the super priority, right? If you have fiscal stability, then it allows you to do a lot of the other priorities. So that does remain an overarching principle, to maintain fiscal stability. And then the specific consensus on, or the consensus on specific priorities, there were five. One was to encourage new affordable housing projects and special needs projects. And again, that is a focus both on allowing us to team up with what the state is encouraging with new housing, but also it ties in nicely with an update of the general plan and with Santa Maria trying to remain affordable housing and being able to have additional housing options for our community. The second priority was to streamline business permits for small business owners to help them be compliant with law. And again, that's another timely opportunity for us. We are seeking to further automate and to further improve our business systems and our permitting and to allow business to flourish in the community, meet the requirements by permits and business licenses, and without the burden of having to go through a lot of process to get there. The third was to provide resources to support the recommendations of the Mayor Task Force for Youth. And as the council knows throughout the year, whether it's CDBG funding, budget priorities, Measure U, it has remained a priority for the City Council to focus on our youth and serving our youth and assuring that our youth have constructive ways to participate in the community and avoid violence and other potential distractions that many youth are faced with in any community. And so that's, again, remains a priority for the city going forward, to support the youth and support the principles and the recommendations of the Mayor's Task Force for Youth Safety. Two other priorities. One was to finalize and implement the downtown specific plan with a mixture of private and public investments. The prior goal-setting was to develop the downtown plan. And so we do have the adopted downtown plan. We have worked with a number of the different agencies to identify priorities to move forward, primarily Caltrans. And now we have a Downtown Committee and Development Interest Downtown. So there's a lot going on. Again, this is an opportune time for us to further implement, finalize and implement the downtown revitalization. We have significant private sector interest. We have an approved plan with Caltrans for streetscape improvements, and we're updating our general plan and looking at an RFP process. We'll bring back to the City Council for development interests on the parcels downtown that the city owns. And then finally, the fifth priority of the council, the fifth top priority of the council was to proceed with efficient and timely development processing and permitting to take advantage of the current economy and demand. And again, that's timely in the sense that we recognize that the economy is strong. It still remains strong. Obviously, this pandemic is an impact, but we want to make sure that we have the opportunity. We're not holding up development. We have the opportunity to build out the community as the market demands and as people demand and want, and that we're here to help facilitate that development and move it along to take advantage of this economic cycle. And I did mention the principles of governance, again, that the council will govern on an at-large basis, even though the council members are elected by district. And then, so the next steps here, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And the recommendation then is approve the report that's included in the council packet. And approving that would be as the minutes, accepting the report would approve, would be adopting that report as the minutes of that meeting of February 14. And then adopting the resolution confirming the priorities. And then we'll work to prepare the recommended budget. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Are there any questions from the council? Dr. Moats?
Now, Mr. Stillwell, it's going to be hard to prepare the budget for next year based on the assumptions we had one month ago. Because we may have sales tax is going to be way down, those requirements are going to be way up. It seems like things are in a state of flux, almost like, how do you prepare a budget, something like that?
Very carefully.
Yes, you are hearing my three talks, I guess. So yes, Dr. Moats, it's, we were looking forward to a challenging budget anyway due to the increasing costs and relatively flat revenue. The status impact on the economy could be very impactful. We are looking to update the revenue assumptions from that. We anticipate, as I think was announced yesterday, where the recession is, the economy dropping into recession is all but inevitable, and how long that is is going to be the question. So we're preparing the budget. We have not given, provided additional guidance for departments to come up with additional cuts or service level reductions. I think our plan at this point is to keep a close eye on the revenue. You know, there was a lot of purchasing at Costco, but unfortunately, most, you know, the toilet paper and bottled water is tax-exempt. And I, you know, I joked that if there was a big run on to purchase vehicles, that would have been good, but we weren't there. So we do anticipate a downturn. Most of our revenue is driven by consumer sentiment and with sales tax and hotel taxes primarily. And we're looking to develop a budget that will be balanced. We're required to have, present to the council a balanced budget for its adoption. And we're looking at a few scenarios now of whether we scramble to make adjustments ahead of that budget being presented to the council, or also we do adopt a two-year budget, maybe adopt the first year with some additional assumptions in the second year and review that then during the second year. But you're correct in the sense that the budget is going to be tougher than we thought it would be a month ago.
Did you like the answer?
No.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comment, I think, is probably to Mr. Stillwell. It's restrictive. When we get into a meeting like this, in a regular council meeting, there's a lot of restrictions with regard to the Brown Act and the time limits and things like that. So it is a real opportunity when we get together in a setting like we have at the Santa Maria Inn, where it's not as restrictive and there's a little more room for open dialogue. And we're not so structured that it's sometimes you think, God, I wish I'd have said that. And then you don't think about it. And in that setting, we can say, oh, wait a minute, I wanted to say this. So I personally appreciated the way that you folks set up the meeting and allowed us the freedom to speak a little less restricted. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hart, you didn't hear me?
I was just going to call for the motion if we're done.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak? No, Madam Mayor, we have not. Okay. Have you received any calls or comments from the public? No, Madam Mayor, we have not. So I'd like to bring it back then to the council.
And I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming the priorities for 2020 to 2022 and approving the minutes of the February 14, 2020 goal-setting workshop.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution confirming the 2020, 22 priorities and approving the minutes of the workshop. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item. Yeah, before I forget, one of the managers at the grocery stores said, tell people to quit, to stop panic buying. We've got a lot of supplies. We can get everything on the shelf, but stop the panic buying. So the word's out there. The next item will be a report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So the next meeting of the City Council is April 7. And the agenda at this point is light, so I think that would provide us an opportunity, if it's timely, to present another COVID-19 coronavirus update to the City Council. We'll agendize it. This one was during the staff report, so it didn't give much opportunity for discussion or direction, but we'll put it as a regular agenda item if it's warranted on April 7. Also, we'll look to see if the community presentation can be rescheduled that we had for tonight. And we have a CD, the CDBG Draft Consolidated Plan Action Plan and the Block Rate Advisory Committee Recommendations are scheduled as a public hearing for April 7. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, oral reports of council members. And we're going to begin with required reporting. Who would like to start?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I will start. In my required reporting, my meetings were canceled, so I have nothing to report.
Good report. Okay, Ms. Soto?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Dr. Moats?
Well, I have something to report. I attended the Investment Committee meeting, and we got an update on how we're investing the city's money. And I sort of flippantly, in the past, said, why don't you just get an S&amp;P 500 fund or something like that? You could make 8% instead of 2% or something. But it sure came home to me now, what's happened over the last two weeks, why the city doesn't want to fool with its money and invests in rock-solid, safe, although low-interest investments. We don't lose money. So I was pleased to say that the city's making money. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor. Your Honor, I almost said your honor. I have nothing, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I like that. March, okay, March 4, I attended the Monterey Bay Community Power Board meeting, San Luis Obispo at City Hall. They are going to do an orientation for those of us who are coming on board. That'll be part of this consortium, and probably within the next month or two. I attended Department of Conservation, Public Health Community meetings at the Veterans. March 6, I did the Rick Lehmeyer Show and did speak to leadership, San Antonio Valley Group. Group. March 9, I attended a Rotary work. Commander Bastilleir spoke, and that was really, really interesting. I'm disappointed that the luncheon was canceled, so we could all hear what's going on at Vandenberg. On the 10th of March, I did a ribbon-cutting fellowship of Christian athletes. March 11, I did the rodeo news conference, so there's, they are planning on having the rodeo in June, and so we'll know more as we get closer. On the 12th of March, I attended the funeral memorial for Kacho Shajin, who was assemblyman for this area for, was it three terms? Mr. Stillwell, I can't remember. Was it three terms? I think it was three terms. Later, did the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Military Wall dedication at Coast Hills Credit Union. This morning, did the Ben Hayes Show and Rotary. Any other comments from anyone? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.